I think we're here for the first virtual meeting on the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to be the moderator for the duration of this call. I want to thank everybody who's got on. And I think we just did our mic test, so I think everybody's live. Our consultants are available. We also have some department heads available to speak on certain issues. So Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you, okay?
Sure. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 20th, 2020 Upper Providence Board of Supervisors meeting. During this pandemic, the Board of Supervisors has been in regular communication with township staff, and has been monitoring all the issues impacting residents. Because of the social distancing guidelines recommended by the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the stay-at-home restrictions set forth by Governor Wolf, this Board of Supervisors meeting will not be held at its normal physical location, but rather through this virtual medium forum. On April 14th, 2020, this virtual meeting was legally advertised and is being recorded this evening. It will be uploaded to our website in the same location as the other recorded Board of Supervisor meetings. I would like to thank all of you registered as attendees for our first-ever virtual board meeting. And as a virtual attendee, all of you will have the right to speak under public comment later in the meeting. You will see a red flag symbol on your computer which will alert your host that you wish to make a public statement. At that time, you will be unmuted and you will be able to speak for three minutes. And consistent with our normal rules of procedure, there will be no question and answer, period. However, if you do have a question on any particular item, we will make sure that the appropriate staff members get back to you with an official response. This virtual forum is new to us, and we ask that you bear with us as we ourselves become acclimated to this new format. Okay, so next up is the Pledge Allegiance, but normally during our public meetings, we stand and recite the pledge. But obviously, we cannot do this in cyberspace, but I think it would be very appropriate for all of us to take a moment of silence in remembrance of all those who have become COVID-19. Upper Providence Township has not been untouched by this crisis, and as of today, there are over 80 township residents that have contracted this disease, 10 of which have died. Let us also remember to thank all of our local heroes that are on the front lines fighting this invisible enemy. There are medical providers, grocery store clerks, pharmacists, as well as our fighter fighters, police officers, and AMTs that are on the front lines every day to make sure we are safe and we have food on the table. To all of those heroes out there, we say thank you, and we'll take a moment. Okay, we're going to move on to our first agenda item is the board agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's board agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the board's agenda for this evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the board agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, public comments. We now are at the public comment phase of the agenda where our registered attendees may offer public comment. Please activate your raised hand feature in the toolbar, and the township manager will unmute your mic. And of course, I wanted to reiterate the same rules apply. State your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Tim, do you have any speakers?
We do have one speaker, Madam Chair. It's actually from Bill and Christine Troutman. I don't know which ones on the -- I'm going to find out who it is. They're with me here. Is it Mr. or Mrs. Troutman?
Both.
Okay, you've been unmuted. You're welcome to give your comments.
Okay, I just want to start with the compost site. I got over 10 yards of compost. Get rid of it. And I'm not quite ready to take it over to the new ball field and dump it on the new ball field. I don't think that would be good for me or you. But essentially, this is -- stuff's going to start being dumped on the road and elsewhere with the compost site. So mine's at, and we're going to be open. I know this is not a question-and-answer forum, but this is important.
Okay, I've unmuted Tom Broadbent. Tom, are you on? Tom Broadbent, are you on? I thought I unmuted him.
Okay, Tim, I'm here now.
Okay, can you answer Mr. Troutman's question, please? I think we had a discussion on this, and we're following the leads of the governor, am I correct?
That's it, that's correct. I mean, as soon as we lift everything that's going on right now, the social distancing stuff, we will open. But as of right now, it's something that we shouldn't have open. That's about all I can say about it.
From what I -- I understand, Helene, we'll discuss this more under supervisors' comments, but I will say that we understand from the governor's press conference today that he's going to be releasing or lifting some of these restrictions possibly on May 9th. So we're kind of following the governor's lead on this. So, not Q and A, but I understand that we've been getting a lot of questions on it. So I think it's good that we try to --
It's important. I think my wife has something to say.
Good evening. It's Kristen Troutman, 1320 Black Rock Road. We have a number of questions and concerns regarding the proposed location of the new emergency services facility. So I was wondering if we'd be able to speak once that presentation is given?
You got the floor now to speak, if you'd like.
It's going to be more than three minutes, though, that's my -- and it's questions and comments. So I was just wondering if you wanted us to wait until after that's discussed, and then we could bring up our concerns?
Madam Chair, that's your discretion.
When is the presentation for the firehouse scheduled? I know it's hard with this COVID-19 to schedule anything, but is it more slated that we could have a pocket for them? And that might be a question for -- I'm not sure.
Madam Chair, I believe she can go ahead and make her remarks now.
Right, I think -- Go ahead, Mrs. Troutman.
Okay, thank you. I just want to kind of go back in history a little bit. In April of 2018, there was a special meeting concerning emergency services. That was about the medic responder and the ambulance. I asked at the meeting if a fire station or emergency services building was built at the Black Rock site, where it would be located, and how much it was expected to cost. We were told at that meeting that it would be located across from the new township building and adjacent to the old township building. We currently have a multitude of surveying stakes out here directly in front of our home. Mr. Bortnichak sent us a plan after I emailed everyone last Monday, and it shows that facility directly across the street from our home. The cost two years ago was projected to be $3.2 to $4 million. Now I'm going to jump ahead to June 26th of last year. We were unable to attend that meeting, but we did watch the video. You had a slide up describing the township's criteria. You preferred an arterial road. You wanted it centrally located to serve the entire township. You wanted it to be in a proximity where volunteers reside so that they could respond in a timely fashion. You wanted adequate site distance. You preferred to use property already owned by the township. And a big factor, according to Mr. Magnosi, was the distance from residential homes, trying to keep the facility as far away from those homes as possible. The last criteria was that you wanted it to be located close to Trap Borough. Now, if you're building it at Black Rock, as I expect you are, since, like I said, the stakes are all out there, Black Rock is an arterial road, but it is a problem when it's backed up during the morning and evening rush hours. This location is not centrally located. It's at the upper edge of the southern circle. It's not in the northern circle of one of your slides from that June 26th meeting. It was stated at that meeting by multiple supervisors that neither the Black Rock or the Trap volunteers would come to this location if it's built here. The site distance, in our opinion, from the west, which is Route 113, South Trap Road, is questionable considering there's a hill, and the speed limit on Black Rock is 45 miles per hour, which no one does. We know this from personal experience, thinking when we go to pull out of our driveway and there's nobody coming from that direction, and just like that, there's somebody right on our tail. The property is owned by the township, and it's 23.03 acres. The proposed plan that we received puts the front of the firehouse 130 feet from our front yard and 176 feet from our front door. On the slide from the June 26th meeting, with the footprint of the building shown where you talked about, down where the temporary firehouse is located, it shows the distance from our property is 300 feet. This is going to impact the value of our property in an extremely negative way. Mr. Magnosi also stated during that June 29th meeting that the facility would be built at the same place Mr. Bortnichak said at the April 2018 meeting, which is at the eastern end of the parcel where the firehouse is temporarily located. And this location is not close to Trap Borough. There was discussion about passive use, that firehouses aren't active. But I disagree with that statement, considering if there are four to six calls combined a day on average between the ambulance and fire trucks, that is going to be extremely intrusive to our quality of life. Even if the sirens are not on, we will be inundated with lights, truck noise, and activity 24/7. The township, according to your June 26th meeting last year, paid for no less than three separate studies looking at the emergency services in the township. All three of the studies, according to what I heard on the meeting, indicated the facility should be built somewhere along Route 113 to best serve the needs of the township. Why was the money spent three times if not to follow the recommendations of the studies? And how much did those studies cost? My husband and I drove to the Bechtel Road-Ithan Lane site this afternoon, which is 4.31 acres. It does not face the front of any homes, and it's considerably farther away from the homes that are around it, more than the 176 feet, like our house is going to be. If this is to be built with pull-through bays, having roads on either side of this triangular parcel would make it easy to accommodate those bays. And it's currently just a grass field. It's not trees. It's not things that are going to have to be cleared. There's also an existing emergency vehicle traffic light changer at Bechtel Road and 113. The speed limit on Bechtel is 25 miles an hour, which potentially makes it less likely for motor vehicles to be fire engine collision. And there are no hills. Would the Trap volunteers be willing to respond to that location? We already have four paid firefighters, according to the meeting, and we rely heavily on volunteers. Why would you build a firehouse in a location that no volunteers are willing to come to, as stated again by multiple supervisors at that meeting? If there are no volunteers, what is the township's next step? Is this going to be a 100% paid fire department? It was also stated that the building will look like other township buildings and be buffered from nearby residences. How do you buffer an existing home built in 1835 from an 85-foot concrete apron that sits between the home and the firehouse garage bays? As is proposed, the Black Rock site plan makes our driveway part of an intersection. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Troutman.
Madam Chair, I'm looking. I don't see any other raised hands on the attendees. I'll give everybody a last chance. If there's anybody that would like to make a comment, there's a virtual hand that you need to hit, and then I'll know that you want to say something. I would say that I think you're going to have more detailed statements, updates on the firehouse later in the meeting, Helene.
Just a quick technical comment, Tim. If you're not speaking, please mute your microphones, because when any little noise occurs, it cuts out when it's the person who's supposed to be speaking. So just mute your microphones.
Yeah, there was some background noise from Mrs. Troutman's speaking.
I think, and the people, the panelists have control on your mics, so I'm going to rely on each panelist when you're not speaking to please mute your microphone. That's a good point, Bill. Thanks.
Anybody else, Tim?
I'm just double-checking here on the attendee. We have about 28 attendees, but nobody has raised their hand. I will say this. I mean, since this is virtual technology, and if I see somebody raises their hand, I'll let you know, Helene, through the meeting. But right now, I don't see anybody. So I think you can move on to the next item.
Okay, the next item is executive session report. There was an executive session February 26th, 2020. The board did not convene an executive session to discuss -- we did convene, I'm sorry. Did convene an executive session to discuss police contract negotiations. There are no actions taken, so we'll go on to the next slide. Okay, the next item is our bill list. And because of our current state of emergency, our March 16th meeting was canceled, and therefore, we have two bill list items for approval this evening. They will require two separate motions. For Agenda 1, it's February 13th to March 1st, 2020, in the amount of $1,183,777.54. And Agenda Item 2 is March 12th to April 10th, 2020, in the amount of $1,282,609.26. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill list for the period February 13th through March 11th, 2020, in the amount of $1,183,777.54.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for Agenda Item 2 on the bill list?
I'll make a motion to approve March 12th, 2020 to April 10th, 2020, in the amount of $1,282,609.26.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve this evening. And Tim, correct me, do we have to do these separately, or could we just do them in one motion?
Mr. Bresnan, are you on?
I'm here.
Does it matter on minutes?
Only if there's anyone who feels inclined to vote no to any of them, and then they can indicate that now, and we can break that one out. Otherwise, just do them all together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we could do them together. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 6th, 2027, the Board of Supervisors, 2020, the Board of Supervisor and Sewer Authority joint meeting. I'll also include in that motion, February 18th, 2020, Supervisors' regular meeting, and also March 2nd, 2020, our workshop meeting.
And all those in favor, second that, Bill? Thanks.
Yep.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I got to get rid of this cadence with everybody not sitting near me. Public hearing. Our next agenda item is reserved for public hearings. We do not have one scheduled this evening, so we'll go on to the next slide. Okay, this next agenda item is Ordinance 582, which is, if adopted, will authorize a change in the sanitary sewer billing frequency from quarterly to semi-annual with an effective date of October 1st, 2020. My understanding is that this ordinance has been properly advertised.
Yes, it has.
And do I have a motion to approve the Ordinance 582?
I'll move to approve -- I'm making the motion to approve the -- to approve the enactment of Ordinance 582, changing the sanitary sewer billing frequency from quarterly to semi-annual with an effective date of October 1st, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item. This next agenda item is a bid award for Road Project 8A, which I understand is funded entirely through state liquid fuel monies. Bill Digman's on. Can you briefly summarize this project and offer your recommendations, Bill?
Yes. There were 10 bids received back in early March for this project. The low bidder was Alan Myers, who completed the paving projects last year in the township and did a good job. We're recommending award to Alan Myers for the $665,100. The roads that are included in this are Buck Walter Road, Henry Drive, Helen Drive, Old Mill Road, and Missmir Road. It's liquid fuels, and it came within the budget criteria for this project. So we're recommending award to Alan Myers in the amount of $665,100.
What was the budget? Oh, go ahead, Bill.
I have a question here.
This is the problem with these Zoom calls. Talk of each other. Go ahead, John.
Okay, Bill, I just want to make sure that when Alan, if we're going to award this to Alan Myers, that they don't take so long to put the striping down like they did on the last project that they had.
Okay, I'll make note of that to them.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just, I wanted to ask, Bill, what was the budget that we had to stay within?
I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry. I know it's under the budget. I don't have a specific number.
I believe the budget was in the $700,000 range, but I will get back to you. We'll confer the budget, and I'll chime in later.
Helene, I can confirm that we received state funding, liquid fuel funding this year in the amount of about $680,000. So the funding we received from the state exceeds the bid amount.
It's always nice to hear that.
And Bill, this was a good number, in your opinion?
Yes, the bids were very competitive. You can see the four lowest bidders were within 10% of each other.
All right, and folks, I know it's been about five years now. We bid these now at the end of winter to get a head start on other towns. So we typically, so we're at least five years, Bill, right? We've been getting much better numbers than had we waited until May or June to bid this, right?
Correct, and we've had a better opportunity to get the projects completed during the summertime also.
Thank you.
So, Bill, all that's going on with COVID, is it going to impact the start of this at all? Or will it still go along track for summer and?
Alan Myers has indicated to us they're anxious to get started.
And then one other question. In the past, do we usually work with Alan, or who are the top contenders? Do they usually come in and win the bid?
The people you see listed here, Alan Myers, has been low. I believe Reading Site has been low in the past. Innovative Construction Services, so you're the one, two, and four bidders, I believe, have won the contracts in the past. RoadCon may have won many, many years ago.
Right.
But generally, you get the same group of bidders.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll move to approve a bid award in the amount of $665,100 to Worcester-based Alan Myers, being the lowest responsible bidder within budgetary limitations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a bid award in the amount of $665,100 to Worcester-based Alan Myers, being the lowest responsible bidder within budgetary limitations.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next agenda item. This next agenda item is Resolution 2020-15, which authorizes the submission of a $225,000 grant application through the Greenway Trails and Recreation Program to be used for the Troutman-Ashenfeldter Trail Project. I'd like to ask our planning director, Jeff Grace, to give a little bit more background on this very important trail project. Is Jeff on?
Jeff, are you on?
I'm on. Yes, I am. Good evening, everybody. This is a trail, we've identified a few years running now, as a high priority. The trail connects an existing trail on Troutman Road to an existing trail on the other side of, on the north side of 422 that takes you to the Province Corporate Center, and you can get down to the Perkyomen Trail. What this trail will do is connect through GlaxoSmithKline. They've graciously offered an easement through their property, through the back of, rear portion of some of their property on the east side of Troutman Road. And then we'll get onto Ashenfeldter Road, have a little bit of an on-road trail, get under 422, and then connect to the trail. And what that will allow you to do is actually walk from the township building, the Township Park, Black Rock Park, all the way to Perkyomen Trail. And then the other priority trail is the connection from Black Rock Park down to, through Rivercrest, down to, or adjacent to Rivercrest, down to the Schuylkill Trail. So we will have a connection from one trail to the other, something we've been striving for for years now. And Bill's office pointed out this grant to us, and I'll let him speak to the details of it. But I think it's a great opportunity to use some outside funding, assuming we get it, to put this trail connection in.
Bill, anything you want to add to that?
The grant is an 85% grant, 15% match on project cost by the township. The trail length here is about 3,000 linear feet, so it's a little under, I think, $300,000. We're looking at as an overall budget for this.
Great. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of Resolution 2020-15?
I'll make a motion to authorize the adoption of Resolution 2020-15.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're at managers' report and department head reports. It kind of went quick. The next agenda item is, okay, the managers' reports. I do have an update on the new Fire and Emergency Services project, which I'd like to share with everyone. We are in the process of designing a four-bay emergency services facility with a footprint of about 21,300 square feet on Black Rock Road near the former township meeting hall. This facility will accommodate career and volunteer firefighters, as well as EMS services on a 24/7 basis. The architect, Godshaw Kane O'Rourke, has partnered with architect Dan Redstone, who is known nationally for his experience in designing similar public safety facilities. who is known nationally for his experience in designing similar public safety facilities. Exterior finishes will be selected that mirror those of the police station and the administration building. And the architect has been directed to design the building with an aim towards meeting green building design standards that are established by the U.S. Green Building Council under their leadership in emergency and environmental design, AKA lead program. The program project schedule calls for bid advertisements in October with an anticipated bid award in December and groundbreaking in the spring of 2021. The project budget currently stands at $7.2 million for the building with associated site work costs of approximately $2.9 million. Now, these are just numbers that are right off the top. We haven't flushed them out, so I don't want everybody to get too crazy about that. We still have to go over the plans and nail them down. We intend to have the architect make a presentation to the board of supervisors and the public at a future board meeting as soon as the COVID-19 restrictions are lifted. Does anybody have any questions on the board? Okay. Next slide, please. Our next agenda item is consultant reports. I believe all of our consultants are with us this evening. Bill, the floor is yours. If you have anything you'd like to add or share?
Just a couple things. The Road Project B list is out to bid now. We're getting bids in early May for action at the Board of Supervisors meetings in May. So I guess that's your May 18th, I think it is, meeting. So we're looking for competitive bids there, hopefully. The sewer projects are ongoing. Tendi Run Sewer, Bog Turtle Habitat Study was completed on Friday. There are no bog turtles, which is a good thing. So the planning module should be going in for public comments into the newspaper later this week and for agency reviews this week also. Jeff mentioned the Lock 60 Trail down along the river. That is like 99% complete. The contractor was just finishing up the punch lists when they were shut down for that work. That concludes my report unless you have any questions on any specific item in the written report.
Anybody have comments? All right, thanks, Bill. Casey, do you have anything to share this evening?
Yeah, I'd just share a couple things with you regarding some ongoing projects. One is the Lynnfield Trap Township Line Road Intersection Project. Back in February, we had received the PennDOT permit for that project to move forward. The project was advertised and was open to bidders at the beginning of March. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, we extended the bid process from April to May. So now bids are due May 5th, 2020, and we'll proceed from that point on to begin to work and build that project. Back in February, the board approved bids for the Egypt Road Adaptive Signal Project. That work moved forward immediately. All the field work is completed, was completed by the end of March. However, a Conalite is still configuring the adaptive system and needs to tie into some things and needs the cooperation of PennDOT and some others back at the offices. So that, that is nearing completion, and as soon as we get some relaxation on the COVID-19 stuff, they should be done. Also, the one thing else, the other thing I'll report is that the GSK Adaptive Project began to move forward right before this COVID-19 thing. They have their engineer and signal vendor on board to move forward that project and will be paying for five years on the signal adaptive signals and working with PennDOT to finish the programming. So that is well in motion, and again, as soon as we get some relaxation of being able to go back out in the field, that, that should be completed this summer.
Now, I have a quick question, Casey, and I forget where we left this. What, what did we end up doing with the green paint that we were gonna do bike lanes? It was Dow. Did we?
Yeah, so we put that project on, on hold for the time being. The thought process was the ongoing maintenance for that, and we looked into the, the paving schedule for Black Rock Road and that if Black Rock Road was going to be paved in the near future, what that might do to the cost toward the township of having to repaint it, as well as the ongoing maintenance. And so we, we've been kind of in a holding pattern in terms of finding a potential new location to put those bike lanes when and if the time. So we've been discussing it at the staff level, but there's, right now, that's, that's on hold for the time being.
Questions? Okay, Jeff, you're back up. If you have anything else to share?
No, but the, sort of the case with land development is just to sort of update everybody. We probably have five, six, seven applications that are sort of queued up. We have all of our reviews done from the consultant standpoint. We've reached out to all the applicants and offered to have phone calls and conferences with them if they want to. So my goal is to get them to clean up their plan so that when we do start having regular meetings, regular public, out in the public meetings, we can have clean letters from the consultants, at least from an engineering standpoint. Obviously, broader policy decisions, we can't always get cleaned up. But from an engineering or traffic engineering standpoint, we can get as much cleaned up as possible so that when we do get back to a public schedule, we can crank through a few of these and it's not belaboring a meeting with a lot of technical questions or, you know, a lot of engineering discussion that will bog down the meeting. It's more, be more policy and more focused. I am looking probably at having a meeting, a virtual meeting on, in May for the Planning Commission. A lot of that depends on the situation. I know the governor signed a bill today that we're waiting breathlessly for Joe's interpretation of, and we'll move forward with that. I, I'm a little concerned about putting anything too controversial through this type of process, only because, you know, I don't want there to be any blowback to the supervisors in the long run, that you approve something without ever putting out in a true public fashion. I think, I've talked to the developers that are leading those more controversial land development applications, and they understand. They're, I'm not getting pressure from anybody to move anything forward or to force a, you know, a deemed approval. So I'm not too concerned about that at this point. You know, if you have any questions about where the land developments are or specific land developments, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm also working on the comprehensive plan. We're moving forward with the Park Master Plan and with Casey's offices working on the Complete Streets Program. We're still hoping to have those all sort of approved this year. We'll see how long we're out. But again, those are processes that really rely on having a public component. And as much as a meeting like this is beneficial, a meeting out in the public where we can actually point to a map and talk to people face to face as best we can is still critical to the whole planning process. And so we're sort of trying to figure that out as we move forward with, you know, once we sort of all get done with the background information. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No questions?
I appreciate, Jeff, you're not putting anything too controversial on, on the agenda in these meetings. We all hope to be back to some normal, more normal type of functioning where we can communicate with the residents, and we certainly don't want things on the agenda that people have great concern about. But we'll see how long things last and what we can get back to, but appreciate it.
And there's enough, I, I don't think there's a plan in front of us right now that has so few technical issues or is so clean at this point that it needs to start through the process. I think there's a lot of engineering and technical issues that all of the plans in front of us need to clean up.
But so they have something to do, to keep them.
Yes, yes. And I'm trying to keep them in the loop and keep the process moving. I just, sort of the finale of being at a public meeting is what's holding us up.
Okay, thank you. Next slide is the solicitor. The next agenda item is solicitor report. Joe, it's all yours.
Thanks. Hello again, everybody. Yeah, there's only one item listed on the slide, and I just was gonna make a quick comment ahead of that. The governor did sign into law today, the Senate Bill 841, which was their version that had come over from the House first and then died and was resurrected and came back. It's a hodgepodge of relief related to COVID, and I'll do some separate memos to break out different parts of it for, for staff. One interesting tweak in it is that it allows these meetings to include written comments in advance rather than having the two-way audio that we have now. I guess we're past that, but if, if you were to find that this in any way was not working, you can receive written comments in advance, and that was not in an earlier version of the bill. It also includes the, the tax relief issue. There was a brief, a couple flurry of emails a little bit ahead of the meeting. And just to clarify, the, the state, the, the bill that was passed today, signed by the governor today, allows local municipalities to extend the discount period through the end of August and then extend the face period, meaning not paying any penalty for being late until, if you pay prior to the end of the year. You don't have to. The, it just gives you the discretion to do that. There was a letter that had gone around earlier from the county asking all municipalities to do as they were doing, and a lot of people came away from that letter thinking that the municipalities were required to do that. You are not. You are free to do whatever you wish with respect to the tax relief. You can extend the discount period out to the end of August and the face period to the end of the year. And as you're aware from prior discussions, and Julie, like most tax collectors and a lot of municipalities, feel that most of the emphasis is really on the, on extending the face period. The discount period is not as critical, but, you know, I can let Julie speak to that. And on the, regarding what Jeff was talking about with the land development reviews, they did say that the clock, they confirmed in the law that the clock is not running during the period of the declaration of emergency. Although, I don't know if it was written wrong or what, it says that you have 30 days from today. In other words, the clock started when the emergency started, and then 30 more days from the date the law went into effect. So theoretically, that wouldn't address a situation where the, the order continued. In fact, you only have 30 more days. No, it does, it should, to me, it should have said that none of the time during the emergency counts against you, but it didn't quite go that far. But we can deal with it. The item that's on the slide is a tax assessment appeal. And as you know, those are the, have the school district doing the laboring or because they get most of the taxes, and then they come in at the end when they've reached an agreement with the county and the taxpayer and ask for our, your agreement. And on this one, the assessment, I believe this is the Bob Evans Restaurant, the assessment was a little over 800 and came down as a result of the settlement to a little over 600, I think 607,000. And they're asking for your, you'd authorize me to sign the settlement stipulation.
Okay, so for this one, we're looking for a motion. I will look for a motion to authorize the solicitor execute a statement stipulation on a tax appeal of, is it Eret B Portfolio?
Yes.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize this solicitor to execute the settlement stipulation regarding the Eret B portfolio assessment appeal.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. All right, this section is supervisors' comments. I think this is a good opportunity to bring everyone up to speed on the current COVID-19 state of emergency that we're still in and its impact on local government operations. We have supervisors who have been receiving data. Some more township emergency operations.
Somebody's alarm clock.
There you go.
Apologize, that was my grandfather clock. I apologize for that.
And I did wanna, and I don't, hope I don't put staff on the spot right here, but I'm wondering, is, is Dan or does Tim wanna sort of chime in here on the latest?
Helene, I'm trying to, I'm gonna allow Dan to talk, and let me see if Rich Russell is here. I think he's on. Guys, I've unmuted both of you. If you guys wanna say anything. Before this meeting started, I did send out the latest COVID-19 update, and Upper Providence now is at 86 confirmed positives and 13 deaths. That's a little, and what's kind of knocked my socks off today is I saw that we had 500 new cases. Rich, is that, is that a valid number? Rich Russell?
Off the check on that, but I'm fairly certain that it is.
Yeah.
500 in what, the county or?
500 new cases since the last report, which is usually the numbers are about 100, 100 or 200. That seemed a rather high number for me, but.
I believe that's 500 new cases since Friday.
Friday, okay.
I monitor it every single day, so it is not 500 cases since yesterday, about 500 by Friday.
Thank you, Lori, but it's the county shy of 3,000. You know, I think we're kind of trailing New York a little bit. I know New York's hitting the apex. I think Pennsylvania, I understand, is about a week, week and a half behind New York. But I'm gonna let Rich or Dan speak to that if you have any more definitive information.
Rich, you have any, any specific statistics before I call?
The only statistics I have are what we put out today, which was from Monco, is that there's 2,923 cases in Montgomery County. There's a total of 164 deaths in Montgomery County. The stay-at-home order is working. I know it's, it's a challenge for everybody. However, it is working. This, the stay-at-home order is helping the hospitals stay within the, the space that they have to treat patients. So I know it's a challenge for everybody, but, but it is actually working. And if we continue on just for a couple more weeks, I'm fairly certain it will be in good shape. If we, if the governor releases things too early, it's going to spike again, and then we're gonna be back in the same boat we were four to six weeks ago and have to start over from square one.
Yeah, and from my perspective, I'll just speak very briefly operationally. We were just, we've modified our shift schedules on the fire, fire side. I'm in contact with all the surrounding volunteer fire and EMS agencies on almost a daily basis, and we're doing the best we can to abide by the governor's orders without allowing it to affect our actual operational status. And so we've got very specific groups that are working together, and they're not cross-contaminating each other, so to speak. Our, our big challenge on the operational side has been PPE, protective equipment. We've only recently started to get a handle on that, so I feel like we're in pretty good shape between the fire, EMS, and the police department with, at least for the time being, an adequate number of masks, eye shields, things like that. We're still struggling with gowns, but we don't tend to need them that much. In addition to that, the cleaning supplies and disinfectants and whatnot, we've slowly been acquiring and, and compiling that stuff for, for future use. So, and receiving a lot of donations now for masks, not the N95 mask, but the everyday mask that, that folks can wear when they're just out in the public and in the stores and so forth. So it's a daily somewhat of a struggle, but we've been, we've gotten really good at going out and finding things and procuring the things that we need to continue to provide the service. So at this point, there's no interruption in service delivery or anything like that that we're concerned about. We're just taking it day by day and trying to do the best we can with the tools that we have.
I wanted to take a minute and thank staff, all of the staff, for just keeping the township going. You guys are doing a great job. I know it's split shift, and there's not a lot of people down at the admin building, and you're still managing to get things done, so thank you for that. Appreciate it. and you're still managing to get things done, so thank you for that. Appreciate it. I had a quick question, Dan. I wanted to loop back to you. On the Expo Center, is that still? I know it was like a place that was holding everything. Is that still happening or?
Yeah, so the county, the county is using Exhibit Hall C to store and collect bulk PPE and disinfectant supplies, the donations, as they come into the county. That's one of the places they're keeping them. And then by appointment, they are, when unmet needs are given to them, they're dispersing that equipment as they can, really by appointment only. It's not a public event. It's only for responders at this point. So they're taking public donations, but the equipment's being dispersed to the agencies as they need it, if they have it. I believe Rich and Rich can confirm this, but I believe also that, was it the Red Cross is going to be? Somebody's going to be holding a blood drive at the Expo Center, if I'm not mistaken, coming up soon too. But that's about all that's going on down there. It's a pretty low-key situation, very quiet a few days a week by appointment only.
Okay. And then, go ahead. Does anybody have questions for Dan or Rich?
Well, I'm actually, the Red Cross is holding a blood drive this week. They were going to do it, I believe it's Wednesday, Thursday. It might be Tuesday, Wednesday with an additional day of Thursday if needed. Tim, I have your answer to the 500 new cases since the last situation report. That's the county's report, and the last one they put out was Friday.
Yeah, and I think Lori just chimed in, so I think that drives with what she said. Whether the county's stats mirror the state's stats is another matter, but.
And I want to switch gears and touch upon summer camps because I know that affects a lot of people that have kids in the township or even outside of the township that are looking forward to summer camps right about now. So I'm not sure if we have an update on that.
We don't really have an update, Helene, other than it's on our radar screen. We're kind of keeping our ears perked on what other park and recreation departments are doing, and we're kind of taking the lead kind of from the county health department and also the state health department as far as if it will be safe to have any type of summer day camp program available at all or whether it would be some type of modified program. It's just, what you do want to do is, whatever decision we make, we want to make soon enough so we can communicate that to the parents so that they're not caught off guard at the last. But it's, we're starting, kind of like the compost facility, we're getting, starting to get more questions about that program as well. Keep people posted.
It's going to be a sad day when you cancel plants, I'm sure, if that happens. Any other comments from supervisors?
No, I just want to echo what you said about thanking the town from staff and also thank the residents who are staying home and following the governor's order. We were one of the first counties shut down in Pennsylvania, and we had a high rate of cases fairly quickly. And it seems that we have flattened the curve, as they say. And all the hospitals in Montgomery County, last I heard, have available beds, which means we have not exceeded capacity anywhere in the county, and that's due to folks following the mitigation. And I agree with what Rich said earlier. I think a few more weeks of this, and we'll be past the worst of it, and then we can begin working our phase plans to get back into some good type of more normal interaction. But I appreciate the fact that folks are staying home. I understand the economic hardships. We will definitely be talking about property tax and extending deadlines at the next meeting, so stay tuned for that and appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Whoa, something happened to me. As long as, you know, I'll tag in on everybody else, but I'd also like to thank all the people who have to go to work because they've been considered essential, such as grocery store employees and those people who are making masks to donate to wherever. My neighbor is putting a lot of masks. The only thing that's holding her up is finding the elastic. So there's a lot of this going on. People need to stay home. The essential workers unfortunately need to keep working. Volunteer whatever you can, where you can, when you can, how you can. And then also be mindful of those businesses that are struggling because we're not going out and eating at the restaurants or the bars or buying, you know, whatever, shopping. And the best recommendation that I've heard is to buy gift certificates at those businesses that you would like to seek survive the pandemic so they can have the money now and you get to enjoy the gift certificate later. I know at least one business that got nothing from the city. And they, because they're a chocolate company, they get one-third of their income at Easter, which is when the pandemic hit. So whether or not they're going to survive this thing is very questionable. So I'm really thankful for all the people that are going to work and helping us out. And please, if you can, you know, buy gift certificates at your favorite businesses so that they can survive this thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. All right, anybody else? Okay, I'm going to move on to upcoming events. Due to our ongoing state of emergency, all of our upcoming events are on a review schedule and may be canceled to comply with ongoing distancing requirements. We encourage everyone to check the Upper Providence Township website regularly regarding the status of these meetings. Our next board of supervisor meeting is scheduled for May 18, 2020, and we expect that this meeting is going to be virtual as well. Next slide. The next planning commission meeting is currently scheduled for May 18, 2020 at 7:00 p.m.
I think it's May 13.
Oh, oh, it said, okay, gotcha. I was reading the notes on the bottom. May 13. Agenda items is MJ4 Properties, Twins on Fourth, Pope John Paul Bleachers, and SEI. Okay, Park and Recs Committee meeting schedules May 20, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. And Comprehensive Plans Subcommittee meeting is May 20, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. We also have Municipal Authority Meeting scheduled June 4, 2020, 7:00 p.m. And I think that's it. It's a wrap. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We got through this.
Yes, we did.
Thanks. Talk to you guys later.